It is six thirty-two on Monday, November fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. Our first item is consent agenda, which includes our October fifteen minutes. Did anybody get a chance to review the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion, corrections?
Good to be here.
No, all good? Okay. So, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Visitors comments? No visitors. Visitors don't like us anymore.
Your agenda peeps. She jumps in.
Now, she owes us. All right. Our student representative is here. Welcome Jasmine, good to see you.
Thank you.
How are you?
Okay.
Are you very excited to be here today?
Of course.
All right, just checking the sarcastic gauge, so.
Yeah.
Well, you should know that gauge pretty well.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
He's just reliving a little bit of that.
I'm a fan of that gauge. So, do you have a report for us?
Oh, written? No.
Okay, it doesn't have to be written, just.
Um, so there's not like a lot going on in Granby right now. We have voting tomorrow.
That didn't sound good.
November is a pretty steady month for us, I guess. There are some kind of issues and rumors going around the school that I wanted to just talk about, especially with the senior class.
Okay, you're not gonna name names, are you?
No.
Okay, that's good then.
The whole coffee and caffeine ban is a very strong dislike by
Tell us about it.
the student body. A lot of people don't feel that it's up to the school to tell us what we can and cannot drink at school, not to like be rude or to like, you know.
No, that's funny, telling us what you heard.
So, a lot of people feel that way. Other people feel like it should be a senior privilege to bring coffee to school because we are getting to that age where we're seventeen, eighteen years old and old enough to make our own decisions on what we drink and consume. It's also been told that what's stopping us from having a coffee right before school and having one when we get out of school versus just having one throughout the school day.
Yeah.
So, is it better to just have one or to have two? So, that's been something that's really been bothering the entire school committee, especially because a lot of students bring coffee to school. It's part of like their daily routine, so. Been a lot of issues with that and a lot of people, not to call anybody out, but do still bring coffee to school. It's not like, you know, we're searching containers and stuff, so it's like at what point does it kind of start a problem? And then, another issue, I guess, for the seniors is finding a way, like a loophole, I guess, so that seniors don't have to do Blizzard bags, which I'm sure a lot of kids don't like to do. But seniors typically don't have, in the past haven't had to make up snow days, and so the seniors don't like that we now have to, which isn't like a bad thing to like do extra work. But a lot of the work that students get assigned to make up Blizzard bags is often just like busy work that isn't always relevant to what we do in class, so a lot of us don't like that. But we do not like having to stay late, so I guess there are pros and cons to that.
So, let me, let me ask you a question. Is it possible, I hear that part, and I think we've been having good conversations on that. Is it possible to have a little more on, it's busy work, you said, right?
Yeah.
What would make it worthwhile? What would make it, you know, a good time spent? Because the intent is not really to give the day away, it's to make sure that there is some meaningful work that is done, that is enriching, that is enjoyable. What could be, what could we do as a school committee? Or what can we do in the schools to make the Blizzard bag better?
Well, I don't like personally, for like one of my classes.
You don't have to answer the entire thing now, but you can answer for yourself now, obviously.
Personally, like I've had classes where like my Blizzard bag would take me like an hour and a half to two hours to do.
Each?
Whereas, yeah, like maybe not like for every class, but like for like two or three of them. And our classes are not that long during a school day, so I don't think that it's very fair to do an hour and a half of work when our classes are around forty-eight, forty-nine minutes.
Can I talk now?
Did you sign in?
Yes.
All right.
Just to let you know that there is a work group going to create a rubric around the amount of time each assignment should, the length of it, the time it should take you, and what kind of work should be assigned, okay? And now I'm gonna go to the caffeine thing. It's not just coffee. I think a huge concern is Red Bull and some of the other things that they see high school students drinking. And so, with that in mind, you know, let the other kids know that those are some of the things. Not just coffee. That, that is a concern for the health. And, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you what for or against, but you need to know that it isn't just coffee and Dunkin' Donuts, okay?
Yeah. I, I'm aware that I personally drink energy drinks, so I was not too happy when I heard about the thing. I follow it, haven't really complained about it. It is what it is, but. But yeah, I mean, just 'cause I can't have it at school does not stop me from having it at all.
I, I understand that, but with that in mind, they are curbing your habit a little bit by not allowing it in school. I, I don't know if that's a good way to look at it. They're making you more aware of what you're putting in your body. I'm gonna tell you, some of the things you see out there with the energy drinks where, you know, kids, one, two, three, something by the day. I worry about that for those young people because they're hard on the rest of their body.
Right.
So, that is part of where it's coming from.
We also discussed that a couple weeks ago, I think during the public forum, I thought. Were we gonna go back to the Wellness Committee and ask them to?
Yes, it already went back to the Wellness Committee. Yep, we'll do that. But it's of course always good to hear what you guys are thinking about these policies. One quick thing though.
Yep.
The Wellness Committee and the School Committee together can make decisions after thoughtful consideration on issues related to students' wellbeing and health and all that. And some restrictions, remember, there's sugar content and all that stuff that we talked about the last so many years, so we don't have that type of beverage anymore. This was something new, so it's good for us to hear. It's not like this, you know, you're bringing up something very controversial. As they mentioned, we heard it during our, what was that occasion? Oh, we had, we had a public, yeah, public
Evaluation of the School Committee.
input into the School Committee evaluation, so we heard that. I know that there's been some discussions on some of the social media forum. I don't follow them, so I don't know the extent of it. But we know that there's been some discussion around that. It's always good to know. 'Cause there is really no this and or that and, black and white. You know, there is some, some middle ground and it helps us to really be grounded in those conversations. So, sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead. Blizzard bag?
So, yeah, just like the time limit, basically how much time we spend on them, making sure that it kind of follows like an actual school day. Like for gym classes, it's like how do you really assign work for a gym class? Like PE is about going outside or, you know, like doing exercise, physical activity a day, whereas sitting down writing like a paper or answering questions, that's not gonna compare to what you'd be doing if you were in a gym class or what the whole point of, like not health, but just like physical education is. So, there's only two like really big ones that I can think of.
Okay.
Yeah, we did ask that the Blizzard bag reevaluated to share for content and stuff like that, right, Cheryl?
Yeah, there's actually a committee that is, that started.
Yes, we met last week. They went to faculty meetings today and had discussions with faculty meetings. I'll be meeting with a group of students at Granby Junior Senior High School in the near future. We have the work group meeting tomorrow. And then, once I meet with students, we're gonna put all of that together and make some recommendations and present to school committee. So, we definitely want the student voice in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't really like, I think overall they're well-liked 'cause people don't wanna come back at the end of June and make up days we missed. I just think that they play a pretty big role, like they're, like they're in absence if you don't do it, but some teachers will grade it as like a quiz or a homework. Whereas like if you had school that day, would you have had a quiz and done bad if you were in school that day? Or was it just because you were home and you were assigned something? So, and then, when you're at home, it's also, you're not gonna have that one-on-one with the teacher to like ask them questions either. So, if it is a quiz grade, you want that help you want. So, now you're doing something right, so before you spend an hour and a half on something and do it completely wrong.
How, how much are you able to hear from the lower grades?
And I'm, I guess not as much as like the junior, senior, sophomore, freshman, because I do see them or I have classes with all of them. I am in like student council with some of the younger kids and we have talked about like, not like in-depth as we do here, but like just small stuff, and I think that overall they're well-liked and they're just like the small little nitpicky things that could be fixed overall and improve them.
Not only on this, but on everything else? And I'm, I asked because I think sometimes it's a challenge to be able to poll every grade, but to the extent that it's possible for you to gather some input feedback from the lower grades, or if you can suggest any other way for us to be able to do that, that would be great as well. I think we're gonna start inviting at least every so often students who go to R Sac and S Sac, right, for them to report back, because last couple of or three years, we made a big deal out of it that that's our connection to what's going on at the student government level, state student government and regional student government, so. So, anything of that nature that the student council would like to share, and to the extent that you are able to bring those to us, it's very helpful for, for the school committees, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna be staying for the next three hours with us, right?
I have never stayed for a whole one, so.
So, you can stay for as long as you want. You can leave anytime you want because we know that you have probably homework or other things to attend to, so feel free to leave anytime.
All right.
Any questions for Jasmine? That would not always ask quite so, don't.
My only request Jasmine is that if we can meet with Hope and National Honor Society and also bring what they're doing, so the school committee is aware of the great work that students are doing. So, I know people are helping with neighbors helping neighbors. There's gonna be some
Yeah, Hope is doing like a food drive.
students going over to senior center, so those are the kinds of things that if we can keep track of, it's really nice for the school committee to hear those kinds of things and even invite students who are doing the work so that we can celebrate them. That's one of our goals, is to celebrate the work that's, that's going on in Granby, both from staff but also from students.
How did the food drive go? I know that they were collecting things Halloween.
So, it's still going on and teachers accept canned goods or toiletries for points in the class, so you can bring in like twenty cans and receive twenty points, and that can be put towards like a quiz or like a homework. So, that's a really good incentive, especially for people who take hard math classes or like hard history and English. So, I know my math teacher has a lot of cans in her room. And I brought in twenty today for my history class, so. I think it's going on for another two weeks, so hopefully it'll continue to grow. I know the middle schoolers are doing like a, like a goal they wanna reach five hundred and they put all of theirs in the hallway, so they kind of do it all together, whereas some teachers have like a competition, like who can have more cans, and so that's how they've kind of been doing with that, yeah.
And is anybody at Granby Junior Senior High School involved with the backpacks that they're filling here at East Meadow?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm not in hope this year. I usually am in hope, but so far, I'm the vice president of NHS and we're not doing anything with that, and I haven't heard from NHS that we're doing anything with it. But usually they do, when they do activities like that, they do put it all over the school, so.
Awesome.
So far, I haven't heard anything from it.
Thank you for saying that. This is not just for you to come here when there is, there are some issues. You know, you guys are the most important thing for this committee and for all of us, so whenever good things happen, there are good stories to share, just you can add those to, to your presentation or what you share with us.
Yeah, and just normal upcoming events, you know, what's, what you guys are working on, you know, even cotillion.
Yeah, working on cotillion. Slow process.
We like to hear about that stuff too, just so we kind of know what's going on. It's fun to hear that stuff.
Yeah, cotillion is a student government thing, or student council thing, I should say. So, that is all the way from nine through twelve, and so we have people, five, five students from each grade, and so we have chosen a night in Venice for our theme this year.
Oh, how fun.
And we're gonna do it at the same place that we do it every year. I think it's the Knights of Columbus, I'm pretty sure. So, and so far, we've had a lot of fun with it, selling tickets for the next like week and a half, so hopefully we get a lot of people going. Last year, our, we didn't have as many people going as normal, so we're hoping that this year the count goes up.
Poor Venice, it flooded.
Yeah, it was either that or a casino theme. We were very, it was very fifty-fifty with that, so. But, that one won, so I guess we're gonna see how that turns out.
Boring twenties.
Yeah, if you don't have enough, enough people, start sending school committee members. Just to make up for the difference. They do? A good thing I'm, I'm not there.
Yeah, we do invite a lot of Shaq Browns, so let's hope we have more students than Shaq Browns, that would be.
Yes, I hope that for you guys as well.
Anything else for Jasmine? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Well, so we're gonna do this every other meeting, right? The first meeting of the month. Great. We'll look forward to that. New business, we have the approval of private schools in town for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Do we have anyone from McDuffie?
No, unfortunately, they were not able to come. They had a conflict arise for tonight. So, I do have their full packet, which includes the one document, the curriculum, that it's about fifty, it's almost a hundred, it's almost a hundred pages, so I didn't upload it. And they do not have their DESI enrollment yet. So, they did send a number with a list of students. They're still at forty, forty students. So, that's different than what was in their packet, because what was in their packet was last year's. So, I can invite them again for the nineteenth, so that they can come forward. Hopefully by then they'll have their true DESI, what they've submitted to DESI, because that's typically part of your packet.
Yeah.
Not just their enrollment.
Let's do that. Let's invite them.
Okay.
So, let's not just water it down all the way to, we're gonna assign something in their absence. So, let's, let's do it next, next time. Thank you.
What's the latest that we can vote on this? Is there, is there a cutoff date or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Nope.
'Cause I don't, I don't really feel comfortable voting without.
No, and I didn't mean that. I just meant that we have, I have more information if you want the curriculum.
Would it be that difficult to upload it? You know how much I like looking over things, so.
What about the rest of us?
We'll, we'll throw it in the folder.
Yes. All right, so we're gonna upload it and, okay, thank you. All right, with that, we don't have McDuffie, but we have Children First. Awesome. So, if you guys, sit again. Would you like to join us? You know, Donna, we get that reaction often and just we start questioning something on this side, but.
We're feeling the love, feeling the love.
They're back there.
Yeah. No, we just, you know, we, we offer that.
This is a new space for us, so we're trying to figure out the French way.
Yeah.
Let us know how it works for you.
Cool. So, if you can introduce yourselves as, you know, you share.
Executive Director of Children First.
Erica P is the kindergarten teacher.
I'm Delin, here I am. My daughter was in kindergarten last year and I'm also in fourth.
Where's her daughter now?
She's at Granby here.
Cool. Well, good to see you all, so we'll turn it to you.
Well, we had an amazing first year. You know, we, as we talked to the parents about it, we really felt like we knew in our hearts that it was going to be a really successful thing, but we also knew that we had nothing previous, that it was really a matter of trust, a leap of faith. And it wasn't long into the school year that we were just blown away by what Erica did with the kids and the way that they were developing and how, just how amazing the experience was for them. So, we're now in year two. So, year one, we had seven children, and in year two, we have ten. So, it's been very successful. The one thing that I took away from our meeting last year was that you were looking for us, something we'd also talked about, to try to gather some data, to gather some information about how it worked. And so, I did send out kind of a questionnaire to, to parents, and I've got some redacted results for you that I won't read to you, but I'll, I have a copy, I think, for each of you. I don't think I knew Jasmine was here.
That's, that's fine.
So, basically, it's just, you know, the demographics. Year one, we had five boys and two girls. Their towns of residence were Hoyok, Belchertown, South Hadley and Granby. They transitioned to first grade, one in South Hadley, one in Belchertown, and five transitioned to Granby Public Schools to a school choice. And this year, we have ten, and we were actually trying to think on the way here, we're like, mm, yeah, we've got six and four. Six Granby and four South Hadley, we think, but don't focus on that. And so, we asked first and foremost, you know, where did your child transition to? And was this the first child in the family making that transition? Because it kind of to me speaks to their understanding of the experience, whether it's their first or they've had others before. And then, what aspects of the Children First kindergarten program best supported their child and why? What aspects were challenging for their child and why? How would they characterize the children's transition to first grade? In what ways was their child prepared for first grade? In what ways was the child unprepared for first grade? Any changes that they would recommend that we make to our program or to the transition to first grade? And then kind of an other, a general other. So, what, the results are essentially as we really all predicted, that things went really well. Kids seem to be either on target or ahead in terms of sight words and reading and math. Parents really wrote a lot about social, social emotional development. So, that was really exciting to us, as we know, that's something that really wasn't talked about even ten years ago. Parents certainly weren't throwing those words around in a way that really made sense. So, that's exciting to us, that the heavy focus on social emotional development that Erica used really seems to have paid off in a lot of ways, and that parents are really recognizing the value. So, the biggest issues were just the transition to a more typical school setting. Lot of complaints about that and about outside time. But when you're comparing fifty percent overall time outside, it's going to be a big jump. And then, some children, but not all of them, had a little bit more transition issues over just kind of sitting in desks and rows, because it's certainly a much more flexible situation where we are. But overall, parents seem happy, kids are happy, and we are barreling through already a couple months of year two. Any questions for Erica or for myself?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The kids that are taking kindergarten, are they, have they grown up through the program, like started two point nine or the little?
An eligibility requirement is that they must have attended our preschool program. So, some of them might have attended since two point nine and several have. Others might have joined us later on, but they all would have had to spend a year in our preschool program.
Oh, nice, okay.
I don't know if everybody's aware, but we added a toddler program when we added the West Wing. And so, we have the potential for kids to have attended from twenty, twenty-one months all the way through kindergarten when that, when that first toddler class comes all the way through. So, that'll be really exciting.
That's amazing, Donna.
And we also have a parent who could speak if there are parental questions.
Well, I know Margot loved it.
Yeah, she, it was good for her, and like Donna had said about the, it was a wonderful coincidence or happenstance for me. She, she herself, I don't think was quite ready for a typical kindergarten. She just has a super strong personality. Spare the kindergarten. But she has, you know, I said, for her, it was kind of hard to gauge for sure because there was so much with the new school where she was brought in and she has an older sibling here. So, she got a little bit more activated than perhaps in the future. But she's, I've noticed she has an attachment to her first grade teacher. They bumped into each other a couple times and she's been very, you know, attached to her as she was with Ms. Erica, so I thought perhaps that would be a problem, but she seems to, you know, love first grade and be perfectly used to it.
I think the one thing that we look at, the two of us look at and think maybe could have been handled differently is that the entire CF group was put into one first grade classroom. And I guess that was at some parent requests. Because they've been together so many years and because this was this little group of seven, they're a little bit more like brothers and sisters in some ways than classmates. And so, you kind of took this group and put it inside of another group. And I wonder how it might have been different for some of them had they not been, had that group of five. So, the, the child in Ducktown, it's just him, and the child in South Hadley, it's just him. So, I, and we were talking also, this year's group two doesn't have the very strong personalities that group one did. Group one had four kids with really very, very strong personalities, a lot of leadership. And their academic skills are really high, their social emotional is like down. They play like alphabet games, but it was just about problem solving and working together, 'cause that's what they needed to be doing instead of identifying letters. So, we're gonna be very interested to track, you know, year two, because it's a, it's a whole different group of personalities in, in a big way. And just see over time what these results look like, and that's what I'm, you know, one group doesn't tell us anything. One child doesn't tell us anything. It's going to be over time as we track this, are there patterns, are there things that we can learn about?
Do you have discussions with this, the kindergarten teachers or the principals when, for the schools they're going into?
Discussions with the first grade teachers. So, we have had in the past discussions with the kindergarten teachers who really helped us kind of develop which, which direction we would be going. So, that was quite a few years ago now. But what we're most interested in, I wanted these for tonight for you. So, most of this is obviously before parent teacher conferences, which will be happening for us next week in Belchertown. It's like the first week of December, so we're thinking that when those are over, we'd like to send maybe a questionnaire to the teachers and get some of their opinion about, if there's anything that stands out or something that we can do differently. So, there was some feedback that maybe the handwriting without tears could be strengthened. So, we've just purchased some materials and we're gonna make sure that that gets strengthened for next year. That's the one kind of big piece of feedback that we received.
I guess I was asking because I was just wondering, I mean, that's how students are identified for maybe which teacher would be a good fit for them and, you know, looking at the students in general. students are identified for maybe which teacher would be a good fit for them and, you know, looking at the students in general, which, so I was surprised when you said all students went into the same classroom, and my first thought was, oh, I would, I would have thought that there would have been a conversation about.
Right, and there used to be conversations with kindergarten about placements, um, from preschool to kindergarten, and I don't know if those happened last year. Um, I think when the kindergarten coordinator positions a lady, maybe some of that kind of way, uh, but there were discussions about placement.
Yeah, it seems like really important discussions to be having.
Yeah, I think so too.
I mean, because these kids are switching schools, I mean, that, that can be pretty traumatic for, for students, um, I don't know, and it would just be a really good way to transition students into their new schools, new classrooms, new teachers, new students.
Yep. We worked more with Granby than we did South Hadley in Belcher Town, um, but they had, um, we did have some transition, uh, experiences with first grade, so they, they, uh, each of the parents went and visited the classroom, they did some beforehand as well, but there wasn't a discussion about placement.
Hmm.
Do you think the school choice to Granby was partly because, you know, they have a relationship now with Children First? And they can go, do, go to the after school, you know, get off the bus?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and because, you know, you guys are in town, do you think that that helped?
In the two situations, I'm not sure if that's true.
Okay.
Um, one family, uh, was already a school choice family, um, and so I think it
Makes sense, yeah.
went that way, um, and the other family, uh, has a parent who's a staff member.
Oh, okay.
And so I think it was pretty logical for both of those two. However, when you take Children First twenty-year history into account, we have many children or families who are able to do school choice because of the before and after school program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think that it is logical that over time, it could feed school choice because of that relationship and not wanting to end that relationship, um, so I think that that could happen. Of course, we're dealing with just such a small sample, we want to keep it very small.
Right, right, mm. And I would think conversations in the reverse could be happening too, if there are students here in preschool, and maybe the decision is, maybe the student would benefit from, or e- even in kindergarten, maybe the student would benefit from another year in kindergarten, or, I mean, I would think the conversation going both ways could benefit everybody, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, wasn't that, wasn't that the hope? In the long run too, right? I don't know.
So do you have any interaction during the year to discuss some of these, uh, topics and maybe see the progress around these topics?
Yep, Carol visits annually and Cheryl visits annually, um, we have, uh, various representatives from, um, for instance, we have a referral that coming in, and so we, I think we keep a pretty, uh, uh, vigorous conversation with Granby schools, we're, we're developing that in South Hadley, and we're just getting to develop it with Belcher Town.
That's good.
Hmm.
Any other questions?
Definitely, yeah, I'm excited in looking at that, data.
We're data-driven, huh?
Well, it's just, I love to come.
Have any questions?
Helpful.
Anything else from you guys? No? Alright, I'll move it to vote then.
Uh, yes.
Okay, I can entertain a motion.
Um, I will make the motion to approve Children's First Enterprise Inc. For private school for two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
Yep.
One second.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Very good to see you, and great to see that, um, things are, things are, uh, coming together, uh, changing, uh, there's that connection.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to a, a long-term
Yes.
connection and more communication.
And if there are particular questions, you know, I just made that up. But I think it was basically the, the key to this year is, how was the transition? Is there something we should do better, is there, you know, but what would you want me to ask that group when they're transitioning to second grade? So, you know, and maybe it's not every year, maybe it's, uh, Jen and I were talking on the way in, that there seems to be a pretty high percentage of Children First kids in leadership in the school system, so, um, we're, you know, we're really seeing that a lot, and so are, are there particular things that you would like me to ask parents as we watch their, those, that group one, so group year two, we'll get these questions exactly. But what are you thinking as we go forward? What kind of information would you like me to gather? You don't have to answer that now, but, you know, if that's something that you can be thinking about and letting me know, um, because next year, I would want to develop a set of questions for this group. Um, and I really beat them with a white noodle saying, I want a hundred percent participation, you guys, come on! Uh, and I got them all in today! So I did, uh, you know, I'd really like to see if we can follow these kids, um, but, you know, what are you wanting to know, what, what kinds of questions would you like me to ask them?
Is the composition of your pre-K population similar to kindergarten? In terms of how many Granby students?
Yes, we're, yes, we're generally about fifty percent Granby, forty percent South Hadley, and ten percent other.
Hmm.
What would be interesting, we had a similar conversation last year, and you mentioned again that about fifty percent of the time is spent outside, and we were saying, hey, you know, this new school is coming, and we have, we're gonna have some other opportunities. It would be interesting to see how things change compared to West Street, you know, what they get there, what they get here, whether or not the sentiments change, the transition is different. It would be interesting to see, because you have quite a few students, you know, it's, uh, seven, five plus ten, at the very least, right? Do you have eighty-five students in your, in your school?
Uh, for the toddler preschool, um, we've got, um, sixty preschool slots, nine toddler slots, and then ten-ish kindergarten slots.
Okay, yeah, I was going with that, with the, what I saw on the
Yeah, yep.
On the form, okay.
And I, I can speak from experience, both of my girls went to Children First for, um, pre-K until they couldn't anymore, and the love of the outdoors that they have was, I mean, we're outdoor people anyway, but it was certainly instilled in them, my older daughter, when it's nice out, she cannot do her homework inside, because she grew up doing, you know, until fifth, sixth grade, did even go up to sixth grade, doing her homework outside. So she will put her coat on in the winter and sit on the porch and do reading, and she just thinks differently and appreciates being out the, out of, in the outdoors, because that's how she learned, it's sort of inbred. And she started on the day she turned two point nine, and she's, she was there until sixth grade. And it's just like, the influence on the outdoors is nice, I really love to see some of that for the, in this new school with the little kids and, you know, the older kids just thinking differently, because I see the benefits, and my younger daughter, she's not wired the same as Eva, but if she wants to relax, she takes a book and she goes out and she finds a quiet corner and just reads outside, and it's like her own, like centering, and it just, it's so nice to see, because I don't think we spend enough time outdoors in general now, so
Yeah.
I thank them for that, because it's so nice to have, to have that.
Yeah, the whole outdoor element is almost out, so I get to think of some shows you can do with that, so.
It's strange, because the reason we settled on Granby was because of your backyard. When my wife saw that, she's like, this is where Isaac's gonna go, so.
And he wasn't rolling, right? You were not just going to the backyard.
Just throw him over the fence.
Yeah, I know.
How about it?
But she, 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 she walked in there, she met Ms. Donna, and she saw a back, she's like, this is, this is the place. Uh, and then she found a house in Granby, going close enough to, go to that school.
See, the idea is you guys come here and then we ask questions, and then, you know, not that we do your promotion in front of the camera, but, you know, we did that too, so. That's all good. Any other questions for Children First?
I guess, just thinking longer term, um, about the data, um, one of the things that sticks in my head is Isaac's closest friends right now that have been consistent are those that he's made
Yep.
at Children's First before he went to school, and I'm wondering what that extra year together may do with that kind of dynamic going forward, just, just curious.
Yeah, and the other thing, I'm glad you brought that up, that we felt from the preschool families we were hearing is that these, uh, the parent relationships, so the safety network of parents that helped each other parent and support each other in terms of joy and in crisis, um, how strong that was, and so we wanted to take, make that even stronger with the kindergarten group, so Ms. Erica had every month had family events, um, so her whole group of seven last year and their families were invited for an evening, so Halloween, they decorated Halloween bags and and decorations.
Yeah, I didn't think of that, but those are the, the first numbers that my wife will go to also in her, her book of, of when she meets someone or has a question, so.
Yeah, it's built on the theory that we're family.
Yeah, and I'm just
And that we take care of each other.
So I'm thinking that might be an interesting thing to look at longer term too.
How the friendships stay, you know, I like that.
But there's the other side of it too, I guess, that you mentioned earlier, if they do stay together, does it then mean that they are not uh, interacting, uh, with others and making new friends, because it's great to have that early childhood friendship.
Mm-hmm.
But how, you know, how we can build beyond that probably is another, another aspect of it.
Right. Right now, I see them really doing that in their sports events and their extracurricular events, this group. Uh, but because they were such strong personalities, I, I wouldn't have wanted them to get together. But, here we go.
Anything else?
Did we actually vote? We did.
Yes, we did.
We had a post-vote party.
Post-vote.
Yeah.
Like tomorrow.
Donna, Erica, thank you very much for coming.
Yes, thank you, and thank you to this too, this is really helpful.
I'm also a teacher. But thank you for having me.
No, thank you.
So am I coming with not next Monday, the Monday after?
Yes, no, uh, the, the first Monday of, of next month.
Alright, alright. Thank you.
Cool, we'll, we'll see ya. Good luck with school.
Can I take a time out and run and go get my water?
What do you mean?
You can do anything you want.
I can? Alright, I'm gonna take a quick time out and go get my water, I forgot it in my car.
Yes. Alright.
Do you have your keys?
I don't need my keys, I have push, the push button thing.
Well, that allowed us to see that you don't have the, uh,
I have a boot list, so I can still.
Yeah, boot, oh. Alright, so. The vote was unanimous on that one. Let me just mark that. I'm glad she asked a question, because after the additional conversation, I was gonna ask, could we vote on this?
Yeah, what, two minutes earlier?
You know.
That middle age thing that's just really sneaking up on you.
Thank you for calling at middle age, yes.
I think we stopped by your, uh, your house on Christmas, on, on Halloween.
Oh, really? Man, I'll tell you, kids were coming in droves.
You, you had the big eyes up on the
That's because it was my tier.
Yes, that was our house, yes.
Because I thought that, I thought, I thought that was your husband that entered the door.
Yeah, it could have been, we, we were taking turns. But we literally had packs of like fifteen kids at a time coming to our house.
My wife thought that thing that was standing out on the porch was actually gonna
The mummy.
Yeah, it was actually gonna move, so she was waiting.
When it worked, because it's battery operated, it would open its mouth and open the eyes, and it would freak people out, and it, it doesn't work anymore.
So, alright.
Well, it's a true therapist.
When I tell kids, the, the kids that are the scare, the most scared, I say, this is good, this is pretend scary, this is good. This is fun scary.
So by the time the door was entered, the, the, there was a police cruiser that was up, and they had extra candy from the high school. And they were, and Isaac was torn, he's like, do I stay here or do I run down there and, you know, get the candy there?
Alright, moving on to old business. School committee goals, we have two sections. Uh, we might have, and looks like we will have, uh, a shortened version for one, the community relations, uh, because, uh, Jen had a uh, work-related emergency, Jen Curran, and cannot, could not be here, and I don't expect her to join us uh, later in the meeting, so the first item is new member onboarding. Did everybody get a chance to look at it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I posted it on, in our folder, but I think I forgot to let folks know that I would post it there. So I seem to be the only person who had two million comments on it, and then I went back and looked and I said, uh-oh. Either no one did anything, or, uh, it's because I forgot to let you guys know, so I apologize for that. So how did we, how do we wanna do this, uh, Deanna, it's all yours.
Uh, well, I, I think we just talk about it, we just talk about how, how it's formatted, how it's laid out, um, I took, I basically relied on two handbooks, one from, I think it's, I don't know if I'm saying this wrong, Lester and, uh, Chelsea were the two that I really focused in on. And, um, took what I felt was relevant and appropriate for, for us, and kind of spliced it all together into one document, knowing that it was just gonna be a rough draft and something for everybody to use as discussion topics and make edits and suggestions.
Alright, so my quick comment, well, I don't have quick comments, because I have two million comments in there already.
Yes, you do.
Um, but, first of all, thank you very much for putting it, I thought it was, it was really comprehensive. I, at times thought, was it, um, was it really the onboarding, or was there, was there more, uh, substance in there that was, that went beyond onboarding? And there are a few comments that I left in terms of adding a few things, but overall, I think you touched on all critical topics. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's, first of all, a great place to start, but also, um, a great place for us to, to build, to refer to for a lot of other purposes too. I mean, I can, we can refer ourselves, others in the school community, in our overall community, to a document like this for uh, some of the things that you included in there, so I thought it was very nicely done and very comprehensive.
Well, that's what I thought as well, as far as, um, kind of just the, the basis, because I'm sure as we're going forward, we're gonna make, just like any policy or handbook, we're gonna make suggestions, we'll omit things, we'll add other things.
Well, and I think as it's used.
Exactly.
If someone uses it, they'll say, you know, I really could have used some information about blah, 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 blah.
And I don't know why it didn't format correctly, because on my computer, it was perfectly fine, and the pages.
So that's a Google Docs thing, so I won't worry about it then.
Okay.
If you send it to us in Word, then.
Yeah, when I uploaded to, uh, the drive and then started putting comments on it, it was, the, the format was messed up, even though it was still in Word. When I looked at it on my own computer, it was, it was fine.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So. So how do we, uh, first of all, um, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but I just wanna jump ahead and then come back. How do we take all those comments, I see that Cheryl, you have comments, um, and you have two documents in there, there were some comments in red.
I know, I don't know what it's
I don't know who, uh, left those comments in there.
Well, I, yeah, I put comments in red, and I
Oh, okay.
specifically highlighted those because, uh, there were, there were some things that I thought might be relevant, but we have not necessarily talked about or had a standing policy on, but felt it may have been something that we wanted to discuss.
Okay.
So that's why I just highlighted those sections in red.
Yeah, that, that makes sense then. Um.
Because they were both in all the handbooks that I reviewed, all the ones, I, I, there must have been five different district handbooks that I reviewed, and some version of those highlighted areas were coming up, so I just thought, well, I should probably leave it in there, and we'll, we'll at least talk about it.
So the one thing that, I think I added it somewhere towards the end, uh, So the one thing that I think I added it somewhere towards the end, uh well, two things that I thought. We may be able to add, one is related to the legislation that is critical for the work that we do. You know, chapter forty-two, uh you know, circuit breaker. Anything else that uh that we keep on talking about? Uh there are some things that are related to the budget, so I did not want to really go into that, you know, whether it's revolving funds and everything else. Again, because budget is such a big part of what we do, do we want to include something like that, I don't know, Jen, uh feel free to chime in. Whether something like that would help, uh if it was included in the in a document like this, to say, these are some of the key. Key terms, key items that may pop up throughout our conversation almost at every meeting.
Things I would like to see, especially if we're going to get it primarily online, is it's um reference the rules. The the meeting rules that we're following, I forget the.
Roberts.
Roberts, yeah, and I'm sure it's general, and I I can follow along, like as I've sat in on some of those. But it would be nice to have a link, like a hot link to that, so you can actually see what some of those are, because I'm sure.
Book, if you want to borrow it, matter of fact, it's in my car.
Well, we all.
It's not just primarily for me, it'd be, you know. So I mean, just, you know.
You get that book at the charting of the course, um chart, is that what it's called?
Charting course.
Charting the course, um class that you take, you get a copy of the Roberts.
Oh.
It's a, it's a little handbook about this big.
And that's the other thing, is I wasn't aware about of the the course, so.
Yeah, now thanks to Deanne, you know.
Now I know, I read it and I was like, oh, I'm gonna ask about that, and then there's something about eight hours worth of training that you get at at the class. But then, um I was like, oh, okay, am I supposed to do this, it's probably offered during the workday and like, you know.
I think it's Saturday.
Yeah, I did it on a Saturday up at um the collaborative in North Hampton.
So the collaborative is trying to organize another charting of course, um around the same time, December, January.
Yeah, okay. And that was really, it was a Saturday, it was from nine to, I don't know, whatever that was, and it was very helpful.
Okay.
And it's a requirement.
And it is a requirement.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, that's kinda what I'm saying, like, would have been.
Yeah.
Helpful.
No, that's that's absolutely good to know, and now.
Cause I've been on since May, and now I will, I will, you know, if it's a requirement, probably shouldn't have that be somewhere so that you can take it before you're. I mean, you're elected in May, and now I'm not gonna take it until potentially December, January.
You can't do it until you're, until you actually get elected on.
Right.
And then um they're not offered at the most convenient times.
No.
Or the most convenient places.
Yeah.
I just happened to luck out when I, when I took mine, um the next nearest one was somewhere in the Berkshires.
Yeah, that's where I went. I went to Lee. Um the other thing is some of the meeting norms. You know, how we do certain things.
Can we go back to budget? Just for a second, you said, but do we, are you, am I hearing you say that? The budget section just needs to be expanded with more detail, or there should be additional, like an additional?
Yeah, the budget section right now is uh primarily referring to the series of events that happen around budget time. I'm talking more about the uh the the content of the budget and what shapes the budget.
Yeah.
But again, it may be something that is gonna be included in Adam's handbook when.
And that's why I didn't, I I was going back and forth until I finally got in the mindset of, this is only a new. Onboarding, something that we can hand a brand-new member um for just like the 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 outline. Of, you know, protocols and that sort of thing, I think more detailed information needs to be in Adams. Um whatever school committee, other. Is that, what is that?
Procedural handbook.
Procedural handbook, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the question I think we need to figure out is, this right now um has more substance. And I thought a new, like, a new person just elected would really get. I'm not saying it's it's not needed, I'm just thinking maybe. Um something a little bit even more abridged to somebody who was who was newly elected, just to get them on board. And then from there, this, then this can become something more in-depth of a school, school, a school committee handbook, which is less labeled.
Yeah, I mean, it it we can really highlight some of the critical segments. Just to read very quickly, uh you know, the, we have what, about twenty pages on this one? You know, maybe five pages that you need to read before even your first meeting, and then just catch up by reading the rest of it. Um some of the, maybe we can, you actually did a very nice job on the table of contents, I, as I was going through, I was thinking whether or not. Uh we can just highlight some of the sections, like in some of the books they do, they put certain things in boxes, you know, grayed out or whatever, change the shade. So to attract a little more attention, but other than that, I think, I think this is, this is great, um.
Did you see the?
Couple things that I wasn't aware of, so.
Did you see the protocol agreement? The other document?
Yes.
Yeah. There were some, some things that I did not know whether they were inconsistent, I just marked them as potentially inconsistent. When we were referring to having uh the agenda a week before the meeting, and then, you know, we we are not doing it that way right now. But last time, we talked about it as uh getting the agenda on the Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever that was. Uh prior to the meeting, so we probably want to make sure that we are on the same page. Uh on all the documentation, but I think those are minor things for us to really go over and.
Well, and even in the budget part.
Yeah.
You know, I was putting, I was putting kind of months, you know, like February slash March. Cause I knew this was just gonna be uh just a conversation starter.
Yeah.
You know, it's just kinda getting stuff in there so that we could discuss it.
Yeah. Yeah, and and we're still, you're right, I mean, we're starting it this month, for instance, uh the the Budget Finance Subcommittee. We're gonna have our first meeting with Adam. Uh I don't know when it's gonna be, but sometime this month, to be able to kick off that process, and then start bringing it back to the full committee.
So one thing, um I was questioning about under collective bargaining, and it's probably. Just me not understanding, but it says by two different labor labor unions, but then there's four bullets underneath, and I see that it says Grammy Educators Association. And there's three different units, so that's still just one, one union and then custodians, but we don't have, is it just? There's no name, it's just custodians.
Yeah, it's the Grammy custodial.
I think that's in red.
It is, yeah, so you added it?
I added custodians and then I left it red because I wasn't sure myself.
Okay, I was just wondering what that.
Unaffiliated.
I'm sorry?
They're unaffiliated.
Okay.
They're their own.
They're their own group, but they're not like an uh registered union.
They are a union, but they don't register with like.
Local whatever.
A local blah, yeah.
Okay. Affiliated, got it, okay, I was just wondering what.
So, yeah, I mean, um I guess knowing the actual name. To 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 put in there would be helpful.
So there are some questions in here as well, at the very least, the the version that I'm looking at has questions from me, uh Cheryl or comments. How do we want to reconcile these, uh assuming that this is, this was our first reading? And who should be doing that, uh Deanne, would you be the person again to decide, hey, you know, let's just include, incorporate some of these comments or questions? Uh and then bring back to the committee for the second reading, and then we approve it or vote on it?
I don't have a problem going along and and making the edits and changes. I guess it's just whatever those agreed-upon changes are gonna, are going to be, because right now, it's, you know, I have comments from you, and it's, how do you? How do you kinda whittle it down to those changes?
And you probably have comments from from everybody else too.
I don't see any, any other comments on here.
I I can only, I could only see it on my phone, and I couldn't, I didn't see the editing tab, so I have, I had a sticky note. Of comments, which I've said to you guys about them, um you know, I I agree with Emery that. Like a shortened condensed thing, almost like a checklist, like you need to take this course, you need to have, you know, so. For me, that's how I'm oriented, like I'd like to be able to say, okay, check, yes, I got sworn in by the town clerk, check. I'm gonna take this class, registered on such and such a day, I received my handbook, you know, this is Roberts Rules for a meeting. I've got this link, and then here's the common ones that we use, the schedule is, you know, first and third. Plus additional for subcommittee, and then, you know, the ones about um setting goals and things, so that it's. It's clearer upfront what you're, I mean, you're already elected at that point, so I get it, but so that the expectation of time is clear. Like you should be on a, you're gonna be on a um subcommittee possibly too, you know, just kind of outline at a much higher level. Um so that you can.
So so why don't I take a stab at hooking those pieces out and creating a smaller document? Based off of what's written here, cause I think this is fantastic, the way it's written, it's just.
Yeah.
More than I would have thought for a new orientation, so I I can take a stab at.
This is a fantastic handbook, but I don't know that it's necessarily. Like when I think of onboarding, like when I've been on-boarded at different places, you know, it's a little bit higher level, it refers back to a checklist. And so there's, when you go in and you read this, you're getting some of it, but it's nice to know. Kind of like, I'm envisioning more of a frame framework, I guess.
There's a lot of really good information in here that is pertinent as you go along, but then there's that stuff that you need to know you have to do in the first. Two weeks to two months or 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 whatever.
So that sounds like taking eh extrapolating the information in into a checklist that. That could be attached to this document.
Yeah.
Because it seems to me like the expectation should be that you have to read through the this handbook, like you need to know everything in the handbook.
Right, right.
Not only a checklist.
No, I'm I'm.
But as you're newly elected, I don't think it's as important to understand the budget process that day, or understand the superintendent evaluation process that day. That's stuff you need to know as you go along, and and this document is great at outlining that. But what do I need to know when I'm first elected, as I'm going through my first two or three school committee meetings, and how do I react, and who am I dealing with this kind of?
And I think that's what we kinda talked about the last time, how how would that look, would it, would it be the um the chair and the superintendent? Bringing this person in for a day's worth of training, uh you know.
At that first.
Yeah. Because this handbook, I think, is more to refer to.
Um throughout that first year.
Yes, throughout your first year.
Like, I'm probably gonna have this up all the time now, because there's stuff in there, you know.
But I hear what you're saying that.
It was overwhelming the first few meetings, because I felt like I have no idea, what did I just do? You know, um so.
You're probably gonna feel that way for like three years, just so you know.
But I I just think it would be.
Your first term.
But I just feel like.
Join the club.
Um I think you understand what I'm trying to say, right, like.
No, I understand, I was in that position too, I understand too, and I think what we have to, we have to decide is, are we gonna do this in more of? Are we just gonna hand somebody a checklist and say, hey, go have at it? And we're gonna provide the the links, or is it gonna be more about?
But I also like the idea that you, there's one document in here, and I don't know if it was this one or the other one, that talked about a mentor, and I think that's also.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask who my mentor was, cause I I saw that, that was my other thing, it was like.
Starts with the next one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So checklist and um suggestion for quick links, so to some. State sources, maybe some other.
Even our website, our policy.
Website, uh there are online Roberts Rules pages, we can just have some uh quick links to that, and that could be at the end. The checklist can be on top, other than that, I I agree, this this was very nicely done, Deanne, thank you.
And one thing that would be really nice is if once we get this finalized, is to have it be a hot link to this. For someone that's considering running or whatever, because it's, like, when I, I had a conversation with Emery. You know, before I put my name on the ballot, there's not a ton of information that's out there as to what school committee is. What our school committee is actually responsible for, so I read what I could find, and I read some meeting minutes that were out there on the town website. And, you know, it just, I think this would be a nice thing, so someone that's considering running can see all of the different ways that you're playing a part. For whatever that's worth.
So do you want me to try to put something small together like the checklist?
Yes, I just don't wanna uh be the one saying that, since Deanne put all the time into it, so if it's okay for. To to split that responsibility.
I have no problem with that.
It's actually probably a good idea, cause you may see in creating it where there's maybe potentially some. Um misalignment, uh so.
I really liked it though, I thought it was uh.
That said, there are a lot of comments.
Yes.
How do we?
Exactly.
Yeah, how do we do that?
Also, Jen's not here, and so I don't know if she's um going to have comments either. Um so I don't know if we can reach out to her.
Okay.
Um we have another meeting tomorrow, right?
Oh.
Yes. But this is not on our agenda, so.
Well, it's your goals, these are your goals.
Oh, it's part of the goals.
That's true, that's our workshop.
So we could. It's true.
Yes, these are your goals. Yay, yay, yay.
Your worrying and common things, my comments were more in line with, um should we be looking at something a little bit smaller and faster? For the newly elected versus the handbook? Those are my.
Right, but regardless of what it is, there are comments, and we're gonna have to go through those and see whether or not they're applicable, they're relevant. And are we gonna keep them out, put them in? So will you be doing that, and what would be a good timeframe for us to have this back and have a second reading, and then a vote on it?
So is your suggestion to just take everybody's comments and put them into the document?
Right.
And what if, what if a comment contradicts something that somebody else makes a comment on?
That's part of our second reading, so we would be able to make more comments at that time, and you know, suggestion, suggest some amendments.
Does um this Google Docs, when you do it, can you accept, is it like track changes? Can it, can you accept all, and you know, or go through one by one and accept, so, cause some of them, my screen, it might be how I said. It's hard to see what they're actually linked to in some instances. I don't either, so, I'm learning, but um. Okay.
Alright.
Well, obviously, we won't be able to get to this tomorrow, we're gonna have to do this at the next.
Can we, that's that's what I'm asking, can we do it at the next meeting?
On the seventeenth?
Nineteenth?
Oh, nineteenth, yeah, that's, that's fine.
So let's just shoot for the nineteenth for the second meeting.
Yeah, I don't wanna be living this for like the next four meetings.
No.
And Mike will have the sort of one-sheeter.
Yeah.
Right.
You can, if you can just post it the same way, we can uh bring it to the next meeting, do you want me to take the quick links part and then create that? So we divide and conquer, and then bring it, post it, bring it together?
The three, yeah.
Okay, alright, so let's do it that way, so um Deanne will look at the comments and she will incorporate those.
So I will need your comments and Mike's comments, and hopefully Jen.
Yeah.
Um.
And then, Mike, you will do the checklist, I will do the quick links, and then we'll post them. Uh this actually was good, without really get, you know, I didn't even see what anybody else was doing. I was able to put my comments in and be done with it, then we can have the conversation when we get together at our meeting.
How do you make a?
Yeah, why don't you show me?
I think, do you?
So if you highlight.
If you highlight it, just you can.
Highlight.
You highlight?
Highlight a piece of the document.
If you highlight it, there will be a plus sign on the edge, on the right edge.
Okay.
It's a tiny little thing.
Well, tiny little thing does not work for my really bad eyes.
See?
Okay.
Oh, there it is, okay, and then you click on that?
Yeah, you click on that, it it's gonna give you a box, a comment box, you just write it and then click it, it it saves it.
So then I can just go into the document and work as I normally would?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and then just make the changes and.
There should be somewhere to go through and say, you know, as you're reading through this, you can either ex- accept or decline or. Uh is it resolved?
And you can reply to a comment, if you wanna keep track of your thought, but it, nobody else can, so like. Deanne could respond to.
If it's not clear, you want clarification, you can ask that, but we don't wanna get into the conversation, yeah.
Right.
Cool. Anything else on the the onboarding document, or the member? Anything else on the the onboarding document or the member handbook now, the way it is? Okay, so.
So, so, uh, yeah, just getting back to the other, you guys looked at the other sheet too, the protocols and. Uh, cause I didn't see, I don't know if I saw comments on there.
I didn't have any, I thought I'd, I liked the way it ran, I thought it was good.
It was very clear. It's what I said.
I didn't see your comments.
I just had, very clear. I got all excited when I saw it.
First of all, it was a one pager. It was a good, easy read. I thought it was, it covered everything that, you know, I would consider important. So for everyone's benefit, this is the Granby School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocol Agreement. This is almost a norms document between the uh school committee and and the superintendent. It has um three main sections, support the educational welfare and well-being of all students. Demonstrate professional and collegial relations with one another. Dedicate ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication. And there are bullets under each one of those sections. It's just one page, at the end of the page, there is a little section for everyone to sign and done. This also, by the way, when I looked at the headers, they could, I mean, they sound like goals almost. It was, it was good.
Yeah, I don't see your comments. I don't see anybody.
I don't have any comments. I thought it was, it was good, I did not hit anything.
I guess my c- my question, not really a comment, but is um since there are, you know, the signatures here, is this something we have to re-sign every year?
Yes, that was the point, yeah, so everybody can just.
Be reminded.
Yeah, be reminded.
So somebody will have to learn to do Diane's signature, for instance.
Say that again.
Somebody will have to do your signature.
Yeah, that'll have to be changed.
No, it's good that, you know, this this is now a template, change the name, sign it over, done.
Yeah. So I didn't know if we wanted to even sign it this year.
Yes.
Yes.
Right?
Would like to. A quick uh comment on the previous document, there was some reference to a secretary which we changed.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about that, so.
We we changed these, be- because um that position is being used interchangeably with the vice chair position. So instead of calling it secretary, we switched it to a vice chair, which is most common uh among, it seems, most common am- among uh uh school uh committees.
And.
So then we don't have a secretary.
Yes, but you saw that.
Recording secretary.
We have a recording secretary.
I thought I changed it and put recording secretary, and I thought I made reference to it being the superintendent's.
Yeah, it's in red somewhere.
Executive secretary.
Yeah, I think I put it in red because I wasn't, I wanted to.
In red, I remember seeing.
So you called it uh superintendent's executive secretary, um if the official term that we have to use is a recording secretary, then we should do it that way. But there is also a section that seems to be referring to a secretary role from within the committee, and we don't have that anymore.
Alright, gotcha. I'll remove that.
And I wasn't sure if we combined it, but.
Yeah, and I I, that's why I kinda left it as it was, and I I wasn't sure either if we still had a secretary.
And and there's nothing that says we cannot have that role alongside everything else, so.
Yeah, and your first um comment on the handbook part was was the intent to take M S A, M A S C?
M A S.
Yeah.
I got to the point where anything that um was Leicester or any other school district, I just immediately changed it to Granby. And so that's, that's how I did that. I think that was like on hour four one time when I was just um getting a little bloodshot there. So you, you caught that one.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Diane. Uh, I just confirm that Jen will not be able to join us tonight.
Okay.
So do you have anything high level that you would like to share, or I asked her, would you like us to uh to table uh the the majority of the conversation?
She was gonna put together, I took notes and she was gonna put together something and I was gonna add my comments, so um, what we talked about was one of the things is um if we were both feeling a little bit like we we've referred to it as a couple of different types of groups, like community relations. Um, what's going on in the schools. So we felt like we wanted to just have some conversation to make sure we were thinking about how this group would work more, have it more clearly defined. Um, and then some ideas of how um to go about getting some information from the schools was um to take advantage of some of the things that are happening in the school with the AV production class. Um, reaching out to Ms. Brownell and getting the um the link for the YouTube channel and be able to have that put out on the school committee, um have it, you know, be another feeder for for them to be able to do that. Cause we were looking at it, and some of it's really cute of what it is that they're covering. They're looking at this through the student lens, so it's it's neat. Um, um, we were gonna look into a budget grant for the, for us, um, a steering committee. And we were talking about the steering committee would have five to seven members, and that would report out to the school committee probably once a quarter. Um, we would want to have one of those um people be a GCAM representative, either Ms. Brownell or the person from GCAM that's helping with that class. Two parents as a representative from one, from each school. We were thinking about having a student rep, but we weren't sure how that would work with the younger grades, um. But possibly like a sixth grader and then, you know, maybe a junior or sophomore or junior, kind of eyes and ears of what's going on. And then have a teacher and a para rep or para rep, um ideally one from each school, just from a different side of things. And then someone from the SLT, um, leadership team, someone that could again give perspective. Um, the student rep for the steering committee would also, um, we would think would, with around some guidelines, be able to activate um the Twitter and Facebook feed that we've talked about trying to add to the website within reason, like would have to be approved by someone, um, but they would have the things that would go up there, like the scores of the games, updates on what's going on, and also try to get some um, East Meadow updates from Mr. Latoy or from whoever that rep would be from the other school. And let that sort of be like a a student job, that student rep, part of their responsibility would be to update and those things and um get a little bit more of a presence. Um, and then we were wondering if we should um with this budget that we would wanna get um, have some radio ads, just kind of promotion of something specific. Like one of the examples we were talking about was the Special Olympics Day, you know, like um, kind of help promote things or the Facebook promotions where you can have um that, and then getting more um press releases out for the Sentinel or Town Reminder or just out in the stratosphere somehow. And then a more public Google type galan- uh calendar, um, or like a, or Sports Engine calendar where you could sign up for it, and then any changes to the school calendar populates your iPhone or your Android calendar. So like Sports Engine does it, you sign up as um a parent of a student athlete for whatever team they're on. And if there's any changes to their sports schedule, it sends it and updates it automatically in your calendar, and you get a text that this has been changed. So we were thinking that would be nice for open house, um, you know, anything that would be on that calendar to have it out there for people, only for people that want to, but if there's um events that are going on, you know, oh, this just was populated in your calendar. So it would be great for the parents to be able to kind of sign up for that. But then for grandparents or aunts and uncles or, you know, other people that might wanna know, oh, my um, my grandson's in the band, so I wanna sign up for the band, so there's a performance, or there's um tryouts for the drama play or parent teacher conferences are coming, I need to sign up by this day. Those things could be fed in, and you could get a notification and then you know, kind of become a more electronic. Um, and we would have to come up with some steering committee goals, um, and some website access, and then um the last thought that we had was to establish a newsletter um, and get an email list that's generated um for townspeople, not just parents. But um people could sign up if they wanted to, and um include some of our state senators reps and other committees in town, you know, things that are going on in the school to get, you know, it seems like a lot of other schools in the area, they get a lot more press than we do, and we don't know if it's sheerly based on size, or if it's based on they have more resources to be able to do some of these things, or they're just using things in a different way. So we're thinking that would be one of the goals of the steering committee is to kind of be active in that way to generate this newsletter. So that's not super short as I thought it would be, but um as I'm looking at this, a lot more of it came back to me, but um.
Mike will help you with the checklist.
Um, but I think that that is um kind of, and Jen had a lot more on it, but she had um kind of done the framework of it, and then the two of us sat down and were batting some ideas around. So these were the, I felt like sort of the highlights of how we wanted to frame it. But we wanted to make sure that we were capturing what the the committee's thoughts were on, if this is the right way that we want this group to be, or if it was more based in the community, not just solely in the schools to get information back to us. So we had some questions around that.
So one of the, and just one of the things, the first things that jumped out at me when you were saying this is um moving in a, in a very high-tech way.
Mm-hmm.
But there are an awful lot of people that aren't linked to the schools that well, that I thought we were trying to reach out to that are not high-tech. So do we have any solutions?
Well, that was with the um radio ads, um, press releases for the Sentinel and Town Reminder, and then um the newsletter, newsletter.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that piece does not get forgotten.
Okay.
That to me is a big part of the community outreach, is those people that aren't already linked into the school.
Okay, I will um note that, cause that, it's easy to get caught up because you just think of that way, so I appreciate that, Mike, um.
So you, you had a lot of stuff in there on your list, so a lot of good things. It's a lot to do for a subcommittee or a committee. So I'm assuming that there will be some need for delegation. You mentioned, you you know, putting a group together for one of those items that you mentioned. Probably that, that's something that's gonna have to happen for a variety of those items that you mentioned.
What we were thinking is that this is gonna be such an ongoing process that it's not, it really can't, we didn't think it could actually live wholly in school committee because all of us are so busy already with all the different things that we have, that we were thinking that this steering committee would be primarily responsible for, and they would report back to us once a quarter. So, you know, one, one meeting every, probably every other month or something to come in. Um, and who, uh, either Jen or I would be able to sit in on their meetings, um, as sort of, you know, being on the subcommittee. But we weren't sure how, how to be able to do this, because it's gonna be such a constant piece. If you're talking community relations, that's things that are every couple of days or every couple of weeks to be out in front of it. And we weren't sure how that could live in in school committee. Like, just, you know, that's becoming almost like a full-time jo- job on top of. So we, that's why we were wondering about parameters, like what was the vision, you know, is it to get the steering committee or whatever the appropriate term would be up and running, that comes back as another group to report in? We weren't, I I wasn't sure, cause I'm not sure how, and Jen wasn't sure either. And she could probably clear that up tomorrow or the next meeting, cause I might be all wet, but it was just kinda, how do we wrap this group of five around something that's bigger than we are? If we want, we felt like if we wanna do this, we wanna make sure that it's kind of done right and is grasping or gathering all the information, but, you know, start small and grow. I'm not really sure.
So so that was also a concern of mine, is like, this is not a a one and done thing. This is something that's gonna be ongoing and require a time commitment and and how we would manage that. I guess my question around that is, do we have the ability to create a, a committee or of some sort to do this, to report back into us? Or is that fall out of our jurisdiction? Cause it can't fall on the school administration either, because.
We wouldn't be that much different than what we did for the strategic plan that, you know, it consists of members of the community from the different, different uh centers, whether it's the uh members of town committees, uh, school community, students, uh, you know, educators, staff, whatever. We can actually create committees of that nature for, you know, for any purpose, so long as the purpose is clear and the task is clear. That's, that's possible, and I I honestly, for something that says community relations, I would not think that it should reside with the uh, school committee only anyway. It should be a collaboration. It should be, you know, a lot of feedback input, uh, working together and putting something like that together. The only challenge, since you mentioned high-tech, is I guess for us to determine um, for, for web security purposes or other uh technology-related limitations, where we, where we stop. And then it uh goes to whoever on the school side can upload that type of information to whatever site we're using. Cause we know that we're not gonna have access to those things from outside the school district. But we don't really want to stop short of enlisting and being able to use the skills and talent of those folks. We can do that kinda stuff for uh this type of effort uh from participating. So they can do the front end, and when whatever they put together is ready to be uploaded, then they can work with someone on the school side and uh ask for it to be uploaded. So there's a gateway, in other words, for that type of uploading.
So I guess my next question to you is, you, are you keen to point now where you're saying, do we, do we go deeper? Or do we just create a subcommittee now to, to kinda create goals and, where we set the goals and the task and the parameters and let them kind of move forward in that direction on their own?
So Jen and I were sort of divided on that, and I I feel bad um having a lot of conversations around it with her, not here. Uh, this was her brainchild that, you know, that, we worked on it together, but primarily she had a very clear idea of how she wanted it to look, but we did say that we thought we would sit in on the first couple of meetings, because we didn't want this to come across as uh, we wanted to have the group together to be able to come up with the goals and the tasks together. Because we didn't want it to be driven by us. We thought the way to really have it um capture what's happening, perceptions and things going on, would be able to let them drive what they wanna see. Um, so again, like I said, we had, we had questions and um about that. But this is sort of like the rough idea of how we were thinking it it could work or as an option to work, so.
I like the idea of a, I don't, I don't know if you call it a steering committee or a community rel- relations committee. And I think it does get a little challenging as far as who's, who's feeding what information to whom. Because if it is under the guise of the school committee, then obviously we need to be involved in what information is going out there.
Yeah.
Uh, and who, who's approving it. And, and just the fact that it's, it's ongoing events and experiences in the school district, it's gonna be fluid. It's gonna continually be fluid. On a daily basis.
That's where we're like, oh, my gosh, this is a much bigger, it's like an iceberg, you know, the, we're barely scraping the surface at the top. And one of the things that we were worried about too is, we didn't want whoever would be on this potential committee to feel censored. You know, we want them to, we want it to be in sort of an accurate representation of what's happening. But then at the same time, we realize we don't want anything and everything to be out there, you know, we want it. Cause not everything is gonna be all happy smiles and rainbows all the time, so if there is something that's a negative out there, we want to be able to address it in a positive way.
It almost seems as though each member of this committee would have very specific roles. And I'm just thinking and talking at the same time, so just bear with me. And then each person with whatever specific role they had would, would then consult with somebody in the district, whether it's you or the chairperson or whomever is, is designated on the school committee um for that particular role. Right, so it would be, it would be this reciprocity, right, if it has to do with, say, something that needs to go in print to the Sentinel or the Gazette or whatever it might be, working with the superintendent, and then that per- And then that per, specific person on this committee would have that role and work with you.
So I, I, I wonder if we really, I mean, I'm kind of thinking and speaking through at the same time. But two, like one, one group first to kind of figure out blueprint. And then after that, a second group to do the content, daily, weekly, month, however, however this happens, but. That content group would be separate from, from the original blueprint group, right?
I agree. It feels like the blueprint group is gonna be working very closely with. The school committee and the admin team to develop. Uh, the goals for this.
Yeah, so it's, it becomes very daunting when you start to get into, because we, then we weren't sure.
Welcome to the school committee.
Yeah, yeah, for real. Uh, but we also weren't sure if we were looking at it in too broad of a term. Um, you know, and that's where we're looking for a frame, framework and stuff, is should we step way back and start small? And have this first piece, one of the things we talked about is, you know, we keep, we keep coming back to the website needs to be updated and fixed. So should that be our first. Our first start, update the website, and have the student rep, which would be an easier thing to find, to be able to do. Like the sort of Twitter-ish type feed on the side, you know, Granby Girls won the game today, you know. That they're going to the semifinals or the finals, or you know, kind of some quick hit updates that you can go to the website for, for, you know. That's where we're, we're stuck.
I think you should start small. Pick two things. You're talking the website, and the other, my other suggestion would be the Sentinel. Because if anybody picks up that town paper, it is loaded with Belcher Town, Belcher Town, Belcher Town.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's the Granby Belcher Town Sentinel. And yes, there are children whose parents do not want their picture in the paper. But what about a picture just of a teacher using a smartboard? And you know, how the technology is being updated in our school? What about a picture of a group of kids in that um, excuse me, computer lab there? Or a bunch of kids in the gym, just focusing on what we have.
It seems as though part of, part of the confusion is around, um, you know, what is the problem we're trying to solve?
Right.
You know, and we have to answer that first, because when you say community relations, it's like.
It's, it hits on so many different levels, and, and so Jen and I, she approached it this way, why I say like, this is kind of her. And I was thinking, I was like, well. Um, you know. And I was thinking.
And I think when we looked at the strategic plan, it was a lot around, that particular goal was a lot around perception. And why is it that there's a negative perception of the work that's going on in the school district, and by whom? Um, you know, when you're at Dunkin' Donuts and you're hearing, you know, um, portions of the community, um. You know, that aren't happy. Well, why aren't you ha- you know, I, nobody comes to the superintendent's office and sits down and says, hey, can we talk? About, you know, this, or you know, the finance committee not coming forward and saying, hey, can we talk about. You know, the budget, or can we talk about, you know, net school spending, or can we talk about what the needs, like. You know, that community outreach, I look at it as much more than just. Uh, that goal in particular is much more than just celebrating the schools, it's getting the community to understand at a very deep level. The, the work that's going on for students, um, by the adults in their lives every day, and how the community can support that. Um, on an ongoing basis. Um, and involved in that is updating the website, making sure our Twitter feeds are current and all of that. Um, on a shoestring, know people budget.
Mm-hmm. Right, so that's sort of where we got hung up. And even just in this conversation, you know, you can see how easy it is to go off, be like, oh, this. And, and starting small is great, but then which, which of the two things do you pick to capture, capture that? And yeah, the Sentinel is, you know, primarily a lot of South Hadley and Belcher Town, but. What do we have, you know, they've got, um, is it more sports that's coming up, like where?
If you look at the Sentinel, there's a lot of everything. There's pictures of kids in classrooms. There are, um, you know, they took a field trip here, they have somebody in.
So we're doing all of that, it's just not being communicated, right? So who do you think, do we know who's promoting it in Belcher Town, like, or who's, where?
Or how they promote?
Yeah, or how they're promoting, like, because I know that things are happening here, you know, just. How do we capture that? Because all the information is there, it's just a matter of. You know?
I think that's, that's gonna be part of that whole planning. Uh, what Diane was asking earlier, is the right place to start? What are we trying to address by working on this? And, you know, we can establish what we have, we can establish what, what, what we want to have, and then whatever we don't have is in the middle, that's, that's our gap that. We're trying to close. And that can have, that can have multi, multiple layers.
Should we table this till, I mean.
We can have uh, short-term in that, midterm and long-term, if we want to. So it doesn't have to just be one and none of the other, and we can uh, put different types of effort behind each one of those. Uh, some of them probably are gonna be quick. We don't really want to load the Sentinel just because we want the Sentinel to mention, you know, Granby, right? Yeah, I know, I know. So we, we want to make sure that we understand what. What we really want to include in the uh, in the, in the paper. Or, you know, if you're gonna be talking about radio, what do we want the radio?
Right, then that's what we are.
So that's, those are, those will all require a little more work, but does, you know, that's. So when, when you guys talked about blueprint and content, I guess one is creating that framework, these are the things that, you know, we. Uh, but what specifically goes into that the content part probably is a separate effort, and we can work on that as well.
Okay.
When we're talking, uh. When we find a way to really get excited. I'm sure we're not gonna have any shortage of good ideas and volunteers around that. We were talking about that, I don't know what we called it. It's not Granby night, but open mic.
Yes.
The open mic, which, you know, would use the uh, stage here to have a community evening for a lot of uh. Uh, community-produced. Art, I guess, music or.
Performance space.
Performance. Um, we can, we, we can do. Things to our website, we can talk about social media, we, you, those are very quick things that we can actually put together. To start forming that community, and then, you know, folks will, will be volunteering for things like that, once they see that. You know, there are some, some uh, results of the earlier efforts, that's the way it grows. But we don't necessarily have to just put everything on the table all at once, because that's why I was asking. You're gonna have to delegate, you're gonna have to find people to be able to do all that great stuff that you mentioned. We can divide them into categories of short, mid, long, and then uh, focus on them that way.
I, I do, I do think that we need to um. Kind of look at it as um. I guess, almost breaking out of, well, we do a pretty good job of communicating within the school community, or the school district community. Uh, you, you get the word out, you get these, these text blasts, the email blasts, the phone calls. But part of the community outreach is to get beyond that and out into. Uh, the rest of Granby, or the rest of the community, uh, which is where we, we struggle. And we struggled in a big way. Uh, we sit at the town hall meetings, and it's like. You can always tell, like, like you hear comments, you can always tell when there's a big school vote, because the school loads up the, the town, town hall floor. But so how do we get the same message out to the people that aren't involved? You know, in the day-to-day operations of the school, because they don't have kids in the school, or?
So like, basically what you're saying is, if we can get this, um. Um, get the, um, get people to come, because there's a school vote. We should be able to get people involved, because there's good stuff going on.
And it's not just about the school meeting money, there's good things going on at the schools.
I think what I'm hearing is, just to add to that. Folks who show up for these events, whether it's a town meeting or anything else, are folks who are informed about what's going on in the school district. Because they, they have somebody linked. I hear you say, and correct me, how do you reach out to folks who are not within that connected group? So everybody can see and benefit from what's going on within the school district.
That, that to me was part of the biggest goal of this, of the community outreach, because we had the internal, you know, already covered. It's how do we get out of the district and into the rest of the community?
Well, one of the things though, that you just said, I don't think it's necessarily just the school that turns out for a school vote. There's a lot of people that aren't affiliated with the school, that come in for a school vote, and.
Because their neighbors have talked to them, that's the whole, their neighbors have talked to them.
But I think this, some of that stuff comes from the select board and the finance committee, like I, you know. There's, I don't know if they have it, um, have their own stuff, but some of those town warrants and stuff are posted. And anything that has to do with money in this town gets a big vote, or gets a big turnout. So it doesn't, I don't think it matters. What it's about, if it's, I mean, it could be a big money vote about a fire truck, and there's gonna be a lot more people. That show up than there would for the regular day-to-day kind of stuff, so. I agree, we need to figure out how to get to those other people, but I don't know. That. Like, I don't know what that is. I really don't.
Probably, we don't even, to be very honest, and honest with ourselves too. I don't know that we're doing a great job attracting people who are connected to the school district either. So the recent example, we had to schedule the meetings to get public input twice. The first time we had no one, the second time we had four people who showed up. Uh, but when you go, say, on some of the uh, Facebook pages, I'm hearing, again, just I haven't been on Facebook for a long, long time now. I, I, I know that a lot of things are being discussed there. But they're not coming to us, and we ask specifically to have that type of connection with the community. How do we get there? How do we really convince folks that this is the right place to talk about? Or we find the right way to, to connect with them? So they hear it firsthand from us, as opposed to having to make circles. On a Facebook page to get some information that may or may not be entirely accurate.
And not self-forms, that's another place that, um.
And I, and I'm, and that's where I'm coming from, is how do we, how do we do that?
Yes.
That's part of the community outreach, is how do we, how do we send our own message out there, rather than react to the bits and pieces of messages that the people are getting?
Yeah.
And when it's appropriate, because going to a Boy Scout function and promoting the school, and that, that's not appropriate. Attending Special Olympics and, you know, oh, you know, this is what we're doing, that's not appropriate. So there is also that point, part of it. Is, when is it appropriate, when isn't it?
Right.
I, I guess.
If you don't want to put a sour taste in anybody's mouth.
I, I, just from all of this discussion, I, I'm just gonna go back to what I originally said, which is, I'm really confused. What the problem that we're trying to solve is. I, I, I get. We have a commun, you know, a community relations issue, and we wanna make. Uh, you know, a steering committee or a community relations, but if you were to ask me, what is the purpose of it, I would not be able to answer it.
And, and that's where we have trouble.
In two succinct sentences, or.
So I guess we have to break that, that community relation problem down into smaller pieces.
So I think that's, I think it's something.
Because it seems like there's multiple pieces to what you're saying. It's like, do we have issues bringing in our, you know. Have the families from the district to some of these important meetings? To your point, yes. Do we have, you know, issues getting the good things that the schools are going out to the community at whole? Yes, and can both of those be solved in the same thing? No.
I think we need to have more discussion about it. I don't think we're gonna get anywhere tonight, but that was part of what Jen and I. Were going sort of around and around with. So I don't know if we bring it up again at our next meeting as an agenda item, like this is. You know, to have more group discussion, cause I don't know. I don't know that Jen and I, as the community relations group, can do anymore until we know as a full committee what the group wants to do.
Right, so, that's, that's fair, and that's a good point. This, this came out of our. Of our aspiration as a committee to be able to uh. Do better in terms of our connection with our community. But it wasn't well-defined, we don't have all that stuff, but we knew that it was gonna be one of our goals, that's why we went ahead and created the subcommittee. Maybe we can carve out, I don't know, uh, not the entire meeting tomorrow, but. Part of that workshop that we're gonna have tomorrow to at least talk about the parameters around this. Uh, talk about the purpose, talk about what we're trying to do, because if we just say, we need to form. If the uh, problem that we identified, our, our relations with the community is not good, then we're not gonna solve that problem, because, you know. It's huge, right? But if we identify small pieces of that problem and attack each one of it separately, then I'm sure we can do a lot of good stuff. And we're gonna find out that some of them will be short-term, quick fixes, some of them will be midterm, some of them will be. Uh, aligned with some strate- strategic vision, because it's gonna take a little longer for us to get there.
Yeah.
Uh, so let's just maybe spend, I don't know, up to half an hour tomorrow, uh, at the workshop to. To uh, to. To get a little deeper in this, so that you guys, I agree with you, so that you have some guidance, so that we can pursue this goal uh, more thoroughly. Cool. Thank you, Jen, I appreciate it. Bless you. So next we have enrollment update?
Yes. I have high school. Am I looking at the wrong agenda? Sorry. Oh, yes, I have the wrong agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, so enrollment, um. Sorry, I'll shut up now. Enrollment, which one first? Enrollment, uh, so, we can. Look at, uh. I'm trying to find Kathy's.
So do, do we have the uh, the overall numbers?
There's one that says GPS enrollment.
That was yours, Emery, correct?
Uh, no, one of them is mine, but I don't think that's the one. It might only reflects uh, what Kathy had posted.
Seven twenty-eight, yes. So the overall enrollment, you have it at the top there on that, is seven hundred and twenty-eight students. As of. October first, but since October first, we've had. Um, four new additional enrollments, so we are at uh, seven thirty-two. Did I misspeak?
That's, well, this, this one is labeled GPS enrollment as of eleven oh five twenty eighteen, which is.
Right. So let me, let me start with this question.
Yes.
When we met on October first, uh, which was the day I think we filed with, with the state our initial numbers, October first numbers. The number that we had was seven hundred and thirty-nine at that point, right? That's what my notes say. Because it said Sims, I think you mentioned Sims, you, you said, uh. We had seven hundred and thirty-nine students. We had uh, specific. Numbers.
I had, I had.
Oh, actually, October fifteenth, sorry. Uh, seven hundred and thirty-nine students reported in the Sims report, three hundred and ninety-five in East Meadow, and the balance in uh. Junior, senior high school. So I took that as reflecting what we've filed with the state. Is that, is that, would that be correct to say?
So when we filed the Sims report, I did not check with David. Some of the Sims report has students that um. Are not reflected on our October one data. So there are students that are receiving services, but don't come to Granby Public Schools. So there's some discrepancy in that number, and, and that is my error. So our actual October first numbers are the seven twenty-eight. Um, that Kathy has here, and since then, we've added the four students. So when we look at Reddicker, um, and we pull out of Reddicker. There are additional students that are listed in Reddicker that do not get um. Uploaded to the state, because they are simply receiving speech and language services, but they're going to private school. But we have to code them in some way. Um, so that was the number that I had gotten from David, but didn't dig deep enough. To decipher who those students were. So the discrepancy between the seven thirty-eight that you're saying and the seven twenty-eight now. So the discrepancy between the seven thirty eight that you're saying and the seven twenty eight now. That's some of that discrepancy.
When, just going over on that uh, tangent, so. When we say that there are students who are receiving services here, but they go to private school, would that one of the private schools that are listed there?
Um, yes, some of them are, yep.
Okay. And those private schools are not able to provide the services, not that I'm saying we. So how is that really that a a educational institution that's not able to provide the services that a student needs? Uh, is basically saying, you know what, I can only uh, provide a classroom and a couple of uh, slides. And then rest of it, you go back to your public school and get.
So it's a good question for, I think, when we sit and have discussions with legislators, um, around. Uh, the cost of providing services.
Yeah.
Um, and the fact that, you know, we are still providing, for example, uh, physical therapy, P T, O T. Um, speech and language services to students that are attending private schools.
And not just the two private schools that we have in town, but other school choice private schools, right? You know, like some of the Catholic schools for, um, and um, things like that, right?
Maybe what I can do is have Carol come and talk about um, the kinds of services that we're providing. And the schools that we're providing them in, so we have some clarity.
And so they come to us for services because they are residents? Even though they go to a different, an alternate school?
Correct.
And is that up to a certain age?
I don't wanna misspeak, so I will wait for Carol.
Okay.
I think uh, as long as they need services, um, yes, we we're required to provide services.
Cause I know, uh, I'll wait for Carol.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll stop.
Do we know why um, the school choice out? To build the town in South Adelaide, do you know why? Do we know why the folks are choosing the choice out at four fifty six grades? Is it sports at that age?
Um, some of it is extracurricular, co-curricular, um, some of it is um. Ease for the parents, um, uh, some of it is, um, like we have, uh, staffing. Um, parents may be working in the schools, so they bring their children with them, um, there's a variety of reasons why people are choosing.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make sure we understood that, I mean, I would, I I understand at a high school level, they may have some programs that that we we can't offer that, you know. That fit better there, but I was just.
Yeah.
I just saw those and thought, well.
Sometimes what parents do decide also is, um, sort of under the premise. If the openings are in four, five and six, and I want my student to be there in seven through twelve, I need to get them in now. Um, so, um, if school choice numbers, um, are limited. Sometimes parents will make the decision at younger grades, uh, to to move their student.
Um, so we have hundred and four, as of October first, we had hundred and forty eight students. That we knew of, because some of them were saying that we did not have numbers as of that date. Are these final numbers as of that date, or was still? Uh, not inclusive of potential students who are going elsewhere?
Seven twenty eight.
Seven twenty eight.
Yeah, seven twenty eight is what we submitted to.
Sorry, one forty eight, which is the number of students going somewhere else, uh, even though they are Granby residents. There was an indication somewhere that we do not have numbers for some of these, some of these schools. Um, does it mean that it's possible when you find out there are more students going uh, out of Granby and they're going to those schools? How do we find out?
Kathy, do you wanna talk about?
I have called them numerous times and I just haven't got back the report from them, I don't know what else I can do.
This is the uh, schools you're talking about. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that individually you can't do anything, and it, you should not really, you should not be dependent on what you do or you don't do. But what I find really puzzling, uh, on my, is either this is my sixth or seventh year, whatever it is. Every year we're having the same conversation and the conversation really. Uh, baffles me that we end up saying, schools across this state. Don't really know how many students they have. I mean, that number is fluid up and down at all times, and my simple question is, we really care about attendance? Right, at every school, how do we know how many students are supposed to be attending our, uh, our schools? That, that is still not clear to me, after all these years.
So what I did, um, and put in your folder, and I think will help. Again, this, you're, you're absolutely correct, the system for us to give you accurate monthly enrollment, we do not have. So we're doing that now. Um, so in your folder, you have a new student, withdrawn student from Granby Junior Senior High School. And you have uh, a similar from the elementary school. Um, and so the secretaries in both of the schools will be keeping that as an ongoing record. So we will be able to let you know, um, the grade level, the date, the grade level, and where the student is either going. Or where, why the student is coming to us, whether it's a resident enrollment, a school choice enrollment. Um, a return of a private school student, um, to us. Um, and then we're creating the spreadsheet for the accurate grade level numbers. And those will be updated monthly, so you should see, and I'm, I'm having the secretaries, um, do that, even if there's no change. Um, typically you'll see a little bit of settlement in December and January, not a lot of movement. Um, but creating that for you so that you do know. Uh, from the, from the building level, the accurate numbers that are at the grade levels. Um, in pre K through twelve. And don't forget, our Sims, um, data also includes our transition students, so our eighteen to twenty one year olds.
So how hard would it be, cause I'd like, uh, I'm looking at the high school one. And when I'm looking at the withdrawn, it's pretty, it seems, unless I'm, it seems pretty straightforward. Um, yeah, like moved.
Yep.
Choice.
Yep.
Transferred.
Yep.
But on the new students, it just says the previous school, but I don't know, well, I guess I see choice in some of those. So the ones that don't say choice, would I assume that they, they moved or?
Yes. Yes, that, so you would assume they're a resident enrollment.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
For the withdrawn, may I suggest?
Yep.
One thing, can we just create another column where we move the reason? So then we can, you know, pivot or whatever and create any type of table we want. That actually, this is, this is the first time I'm seeing something like this, and this is, this is good because immediately we see what happened, where they went, why they went.
Yes, yep.
And the numbers, obviously. And what does, what does this mean as of, as of that date, or that's?
They were either enrolled or withdrawn.
Okay.
So for example, you had asked about the grade six student.
Yeah.
Um, that was a move to Palmer, so that was a family, I believe of three. Um, that ended up uh, moving to Palmer, and so three students ended up, I believe it was three. In that family.
So we have hundred and fifty eight.
Cause it's definitely still a big, um. I don't know if this was historical, but when you're looking at the elementary school, there's definitely a lot more coming in than than going out. And the high school, it's uh, pretty, pretty equivalent, like there's, there was, there was a difference, but it wasn't that big. At the elementary level, it's, it's huge coming in and very little going out.
That's a shift, um, and I think we, we talked about what the new school would mean. Uh, for resident enrollment and school choice enrollment, um, and students returning to the district. Uh, so, um, I think you're seeing the result of that, uh, new school effect, if you will, at the elementary school.
Decent mix of, of the new resident.
So I'm still not sure I'm reading this correctly, so based on the new student withdrawn student. After the beginning of the school, so many students came in and so many students, uh, withdrew, is that what that means?
Uh, are you in the high school or the elementary?
Um, I'm, it says previous school, I mean, this is the new students and withdrawn students. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
That's the high school one.
Okay.
Okay, and uh, so does it mean that these things happened after school started, or?
Well, wasn't nine five the first day of school?
Right, so up all summer, up until that day, these were all students that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, this is very helpful if we can keep that.
Yep.
It's a rolling.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, tally of what's happening, so we can keep on top of that. It was good because we were, I was able to see in the McDuffie submission versus what we had, that there was a discrepancy of five students. And they had over, uh, five students more than they actually have on their side, and we're able to find out about that.
Yep.
Any questions on enrollment? There are, there are some students on this high school, uh, new withdrawn. Actually, it's, you know, incoming student, but, oh, previous school, so it would be the last. Last year somewhere else and then, okay.
Right, so the new students under previous school. Um, eh, so for example, the first one, the eleventh grader is a return from McDuffie, that's a resident who returned from McDuffie. That's how you would read that?
Yeah.
The second would be a resident moving into town and their prior school was Holyoke.
Yep.
The third is a choice.
Yeah.
And then the fourth is a choice, the fifth is a choice. The. Uh. Next is a return. From a private school.
Yep.
And then a resident enrollment, a resident enrollment, a resident enrollment, and then a choice enrollment. A choice enrollment, or to return from private, so that's, but I agree, I think the column that we could use standard language around. Resident enrollment, choice enrollment, return from private school, I think would be more clear.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we can then look at.
Right, and and doing that both at the elementary and at, uh, the junior, senior high school level.
Yeah, um, one quick, quick thing that caught my eye. For some of the grades, we seem to be, um, balancing around fifty five to, you know, mid to high fifties. We're just, we're seeing those numbers, and some grades we are seeing, you know, in the, in the. Mid forties maybe. So as we go forward, when we get to those class, higher, uh, enrollment classes. Uh, graduate, and then we have those classes, uh, remaining, so we're gonna have those ten, ten to twenty student. Uh, fluctuation, I'm wondering, and also I, if you uh, saw on my spreadsheet, I tried to see what was the share of school choice students. In each one of those grades, so we see a fluctuation of, um, or a, uh. Uh, spectrum of seven point one percent in one grade. Up to twenty five percent in another grade. So there is really no, uh, consistency across all these grades as to how many students are coming from others, other, other school districts.
I think where you see the consistency is in K and one. With the identification of enrollment as a factor and making, uh, bringing Granby into some fiscal, um, sustainability. Where in two and three with five and five, you know, there, um, historically there was. Um. Uh, I think school choice wasn't, um, perhaps promoted. Um, and really, you know, when the leadership team takes a look. Um, you know, three classrooms at the elementary level is very sustainable in the balance of resident and school choice. As school choice brings in, um, revenue for us, so, um. It was the decision at the leadership and and with school committee to open up those seats.
Yeah.
And really, you know, when you think about, you know, the amount of space that we do have. Um, because we're always at our very primary grades, too big for two classrooms. Then the alternate is to open up the third, and then you have the higher percentage of school choice coming in to fill the remainder seats.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, and.
It's just that.
What, what, what becomes more apparent, and that's why that monthly report is gonna be good with the reasons, uh, to leave. We see that there are, there are people leaving the town as well, we see.
Right.
We see a lot of folks moving in, that's good to see, but also we are seeing some, uh, folks moving out. And we're not gonna have the same number of Granby Bay students for each one of those grades. It allows us to more clearly see what our capacity is to be able to attract more, more students, but, uh. You know, that's, 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 that has to be ongoing planning for, uh, for all of us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. Any other questions on the enrollment? Alright, uh, the next item is the high school roof update.
Yes. Um, Adam is not here, so I am your roof guru. Um, so the roof was repaired, uh, on the week of October twenty third by Titan Roofing in Springfield. Um, since the roof has been repaired, I'm just reading, I know you all can read, but I'm reading for the camera. Um, since the roof has been repaired, there have been no reported leaks in the gym. We will check after this rain, um, going forward, um, Adam will be working with Chris Martin to establish the timeline. Um, for the replacement of the entire roof, um, including the gym on the Granby Junior Senior High School. Uh, so, we have not yet established the timeline, uh, for the roof replacement. At Granby Junior Senior High School, but that is next.
Do we know what the cost was for the roof repair?
That is a very good question, I believe there were quotes, but I don't have that number on the top of my head, I can get it for you.
We, we, are we, do we know for sure that the town is handling whatever is being handled for, for roof repair? Or we're gonna get another pump over to us at some point?
It's my understanding that the cost of the repair was coming from the town.
Okay, but I mean, even with the full repair now, that the town is gonna handle the full repair, they're not gonna shoot it over to us at some point, except.
That's my understanding. Yep.
Well, to be, to be clear, when we say cost of the repair is coming from the town. The entire roof is, uh, coming through the town meeting appropriations, so it is all coming, uh, from the town. It's, I guess what we're trying to understand is what was the additional cost, if any, coming from this effort.
Yep.
Uh, and the timeline is not clear, so we're just also trying to understand the, uh. The governance part of this thing, who makes the decisions, what type of committee will be formed, if anybody. Are we gonna have any representative from this committee, uh, along with that timeline, and I don't know that we have answers to any of those yet.
Not yet, well, there needs to be somebody from the school committee on the roof committee, for sure.
Right, that's.
And the assumption I'm making now is that the repair is coming out of the. Um, the larger sum that the town voted on?
That would be my assumption, but again, I would clarify before I made that statement here.
Yeah.
Yeah, these assumptions, um, need to be clarified.
Yes, also, I would like to be able to understand whether or not, when we initially said that this whole project would have been done in summer. Given that we voted for this amount. Given that we voted for this amount, uh, sometime in, uh, June. Or was it May? May. So whether or not the whole process could have been completed in summer. Uh, to better understand it and with objectivity would be great, so that we don't cause additional angst. Because anybody hearing this may say, you know what, if everything was ready to go, why didn't you guys go and finish it in a month or two? We're talking about the entire roof repair or roof, uh, 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 being replaced. We have to understand what that really entails and what that means in terms of really getting, being able to get into that project. Because, uh, if we're saying that, hey, you know, we have to wait until this whole school is empty, which means summertime. That's one thing, or if we're saying that once, you know, we have some drier weather, we can just go and do it. There has to be, there has to be some way that roof repair and roof construction is continuing even when it's raining, right? I don't know that these folks are stopping all their business just because there is rain out there. Uh, so how do we really better understand all those, uh, variables around this project? That would be very helpful to us as well. Uh, and I don't know that again, we, we have any of that. If we cannot get into that communication, I would be willing to, uh, reach out to the select board. And, uh, see if we can have a conversation with them, so let us know.
Well, yeah, because this is something that we asked for at the, either the last meeting or the meeting before and. It's just a, just a timeline, just a timeline of the pro, of, of the, the process.
Right.
So that we have an idea and not only have an idea, but that we can follow up and say, well, according to the timeline. You know, this should be, this should be completed and, you know, we just wanna make sure it is and. Um, I mean.
I, I also kinda wanna make sure that there's not gonna be any other, you know, outline, things that they're gonna look at us to make a decision on. Uh, in order to proceed, so that we can make a decision on them, or at least know when we need to make a decision on them and not be caught off guard and then try to figure it out later.
Right, cuz we, we were part of, they said we held them up the last time, so.
Alright. Um, any other questions on the roof? Okay, so, so far it, it's looking good. Let's knock on wood and hope that, uh, the repair holds. Until we start the, uh, uh, replacement. Do we have anything that you will be sharing on the budget, whether.
No, uh, Adam will present on the nineteenth, which will be out of cycle, but, um, he'll present.
So we're gonna, uh, again.
You should meet before then.
Yes, the subcommittee will try to get together with Adam and our intent is, I know he's not here and I'm kinda speaking on his behalf as well. But because time is going by and we're not gonna have many meetings left until the end of the year. I really would like to have a conversation around that FY, uh, eighteen. Uh, we had some spreadsheet from the, um, the auditor. A, a couple of spreadsheets. I don't know what those mean. I don't know whether or not they are answering any questions that Adam had. And having not heard from him, I don't, I don't know whether to reach out to the auditor and ask for more. Uh, one confusion seems to have been that he thought the audit was done under the purview of the, uh, town. Even though we were the ones requested, uh, who re, that requested the, uh, audit. So we have to clarify that, but I just wanted to make sure that whatever he shared with us was something helpful for our. Uh, ability to explain where we stand as far as our FY eighteen, uh, budget. Uh, I'm, I'm guessing that based on our conversations and the future conversations that we're gonna have. Uh, with Adam as the subcommittee, uh, budget and finance. We're gonna have a broader conversation on this FY eighteen to talk about what was spent, what wasn't spent, where it, uh, it was kept. Uh, what part of it, um, is used as part of our revolving and. What part of it, if any, needs to be discussed at a town meeting for, you know, uh, whatever amount that may need to be, uh. Uh, returned. The other thing that wasn't clear, and I'm saying again in, uh, Adam's absence. We agreed, um, with the town to have these monthly, uh, reconciliations. And to be fair, I think, uh, Chris did his part and they, they were sending at one point. Monthly, uh, uh. Book close numbers to us. Adam was saying that we did not have July and August, I believe. And we started again receiving, uh, those files in September. I did not understand whether or not. Uh, the absence of July and August numbers are keeping us from. Again, reconciling things on our side. We should find out about that and have that conversation.
Um, I know that one of the things that's, um, difficult, uh, with LBA. Um, and one of the reasons we, um. Were hopeful to go to soft right, um, was reconciliation. Uh, that's a big piece of that change. Uh, what we get is a PDF to reconcile from. Um, and we have asked and received on a couple of occasions, an Excel, uh, spreadsheet, uh, to reconcile. And now we're back to a PDF, so, um, we really need that Excel spreadsheet. Um, so that we can reconcile with our accounts. Um, and we've been trying to work with the town side to get that. Um, so if there's a way for us to include that in a conversation, it would be very helpful as well.
Okay.
They're, they're not automating a job, but they can just trigger and say, at this point.
My understanding is that it's like the print function, you can either print it to PDF or print it to Excel. We just need them in Excel.
And we don't have our own access to LBA to be able to do that?
We have our own, we're trying to reconcile with the town side.
But why would the town see, uh, different numbers than we do if we're using L, LBA on both sides? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. When is our, I guess the answer, we know the answer to that. I was gonna ask when our first meeting is gonna be the joint meeting with the finance committee and the select board, but first we have to kick off FY nineteen.
Right.
But we may need to have another meeting with respect to FY eighteen, uh, depending on what the numbers are. Okay. Yeah, I mean, Adam's not here, so anything else is not gonna help. Upcoming business, we have nothing under upcoming business. Is there anything that any member of the committee would like to include in our conversation? On the nineteenth. We're gonna continue our conversation, uh, on the onboarding documents. Uh, but other than that. Do we have anything?
Not as of right now, maybe in the next. Maybe between now and then. I can't think of anything now.
Uh, superintendent's report.
So I just have this lovely montage of our preschool parade. That are just, um, nowhere but Gramby do I think, um, you would see this. Where the preschool parade happens in the elementary school. And the visit from the parade is into their siblings' classrooms. Um, so I will post this, um, under the superintendent update on the website, so please take a look at it. Um, siblings really getting a kick out of their younger siblings and their costumes and, um, they were just too cute for words. So thank you to, um, Ms. Mora and Ms. Kelly, uh, and also the teacher aides in those classrooms. Uh, for helping that parade, uh, be such a lovely success and now a tradition, we hope, so.
Cool, it's very nice.
They're too cute.
Aren't they too cute? They're just adorable.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Uh, collaborative, do we have anything from collaborative? We don't? Alright. West Street Building Committee, we don't, we did not have any meetings. Um, policy subcommittee, do we have anything, Jen?
Uh, so po, I'm sorry, uh, just to give the subcommittee an update. Uh, we have sent just about the entire policy handbook to review. Uh, with, uh, Dupere, our, uh, school committee attorney, uh, with the exception of one. Um, category, which is large, uh, students, I believe. Um, we have held off on because that was just recently, uh, reviewed.
So it's I, is that what it is?
I think so, yeah, with, with Dr. Hul, so she, or Jay. I think it's Jay. Um, so Dr. Hul was sending me, um, some information that she had. Um, and in the interim, all of the other sections are, uh, with the, with the attorneys for review. Um, and so we should be able to start having, um, our reading of policy and approval. So that hopefully by January will be complete and updated.
Okay. And once it comes back from the attorney, that means it is ready for the full committee's review and then approval?
Yes.
Okay. Cuz remember, we have a promise on the table.
I'm, I'm going for January and I think the promise really should be that if we make January, then we get another year.
Yes.
That would be a broken promise.
Sorry, come on.
Uh, budget subcommittee, we, I, I think we reported, uh, from our last one. We again sat down and we talked about FY eighteen. Right now, we know, uh, what the ending balances were on our side. We just have to find out what the ending balances were on this, on the, uh, town side. The significance of that being this, we, based on what we are seeing, think that we have a certain number. Um, that we can talk about. On the circuit breaker side, on the school choice side, or on the positive side. There was, uh, some surplus on the LEA side as well, which is the local budget. But part of it already returned to the town because, uh, it included transportation that wasn't expended. And without even having the need to go anywhere, it automatically went back to the town. We wanna be able to see all those figures in their totality and be able to explain what is, what was causing the variance. It helps us on two fronts. One is it tells us where, what we planned and what we spent. So it's basically for our learning. Number two, it determines what the real numbers are for us to be able to make any decision. As to what we're gonna do with, with that, uh, with that amount, with the, with that money. Um, so we'll, we'll see, hopefully soon enough, we're gonna get the numbers from the town. So we can have that full conversation, but even in, in the absence of that, based on what we know. Directionally speaking, not with exact numbers, we're gonna have some things shared with the school committee on the nineteenth.
Yeah, this seems, I mean, we went from the end of August to here we are now, November nineteenth.
Right.
Part of that, though, is that. It's like a really shifting number. It's hardly got our hands around. The exact amount, for a number of reasons that we'll find out.
Alright, that was, it, it reminded me of that movie, what was it, uh? There was this substance, Robin Williams. It almost like, we can't even hold it, you know, this budget is so slippery. Alright, um, committee relations, I think we had.
Oh, yeah, we're done with.
We have an executive session today, so with that, uh, by the way, for, uh, one last time. For our next meeting, do you have anything now? If not, as is included in our onboarding document. You can reach out to Cheryl or me to include any item on the, uh, upcoming meeting agendas. Uh, we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part A three. To discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. So I will pause right there and I will, not to put you on the spot, do you have the names of the school committee members in front of you? So we can ask you to do the roll call as opposed to us doing it? What, did you say I?
Oh, I. Yes.
Jennifer Bartos.
I.
Mike Simpson.
I.
I.